If you all place your phones on silent, if you had to take a call, please step out. If everyone would please rise for the pledge.
... of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and visible for the liberty and justice of all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, you may be seated. Okay. Here it is. Okay. Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? No, if there are none, I need a motion to move the agenda. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous. First, we have presentations. Agency donation requests for Common Heart.
I'll be representing Common Heart. Thank you, sir. My name is Ken Sol. I'll be representing Common Heart tonight for Keith Adams. First, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to come in and present our programs to you. And also, to everybody in the room, I would like to invite you to our We Got Talent event, which is on October 11th. It will be the culminating celebration to our Love and Action campaign with a goal to feed 1,200 hungry families here in Union County. To give a little history, Common Heart officially began in 2006 as four friends with a passion to feed hungry people and mobilize individuals to serve those in need in a way that demonstrated God's love. What began as four friends has grown into an army of volunteers, serving hungry families often struggling in the survival-based mode of poverty. Our vision is to create a small revolution of kindness to eradicate food insecurity and eliminate generational poverty here in Union County. Many of you know our thrift store, Common Things, as well as our main pantry, Common Heart, in which our offices are centered here in Indian Trails, out of which we are reaching out into the community through our food pantry programs. Currently, we service 35 percent of the food insecure families here in Union County. Common Heart really seeks to ignite the power of relationships, to break down barriers and build resources to improve the lives of the poor and hungry here in Union County. Our initial program, Common Cupboard Delivery Pantry, equipped neighbors to serve neighbors through the delivery of groceries and has been servicing Union County for over 13 years. We operate two T-FAP traditional pantries, three mobile T-FAP pantry locations, a senior grocery program, and have been holding pop-up pantries to meet the needs of our county's food insecure. In 2019 thus far, we've serviced 7,731 families. We also service our community through economic empowerment, which our program is focusing on stabilizing families and empowering them to get ahead and get engaged and help improve our community. We have implemented Bridges Out of Poverty frameworks in our organization to train partner organizations how to create better outcomes for those experiencing poverty here in Union County. In 2017, we began piloting an innovative program run out of New Covenant Baptist Church here in Indian Trail. The program is called Getting Ahead in a Just-Getting-Bye World, in which we work directly with families in poverty to establish resources and success goals towards self-sufficiency. Common Heart also serves our neighbors in need through limited crisis assistance, free tax preparation, and Medicare assistance. Most recently, Common Heart has taken on adult literacy after the Monroe-based Literacy Council of Union County abruptly closed. As I said, you know, we are in the middle of our Love and Action campaign with a goal to feed 1,200 hungry families, and I would seek $2,000 to support our programs ongoing in order to reach our goal of raising $30,000 this month. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, what's your name, if you don't mind me repeating?
My name is Ken Sol. S-O-L for the last name.
And Ken, how far along are you guys in terms of your fundraising activities? I know you said you're trying to get to $30,000 for the year. What's your progress so far?
For $30,000 for the month, sir.
For the month?
Yes, for the month, and currently, we were at $18,100.
On average, how many people do you think you end up touching and reaching for the entire year, you think, give or take?
Give or take, I think, right now...
There's nothing to be accurate.
It's individual families, we're roughly about 11,000 individual families, sir.
And that's not just, that's not Indian Trail, it's county, right?
Yes, we outreach countywide, my friend.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. As per policy, this should be put on the next agenda for council vote or consideration. Patrick? Thank you. Next is the Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. Thank you. That brings us to new employee introduction. Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's always a pleasure to address you. Hope everyone is doing well this evening. Standing beside me, we have our newest hire in our Park and Rec Department. As many of you know, our former Park and Rec Specialist left midsummer. We were very fortunate, we had a great candidate pool of 158 applicants, so to say that we chose the cream of the crop is not an exaggeration. So, this is Steven, he's our new Parks and Recreation Specialist. He's been with us for just about a month full-time. Luckily, he came from us part-time, so he understands a lot of the backside of things. At the park, he's been with us for about two years total. He's a Wingate graduate this past semester. He ran track from Florida, but tends to enjoy this weather a little more than Florida. So, I just wanted to make you, make your acquaintance this evening. If you have any questions for him, he is here. Other than that, you'll be seeing him around at the park, at the building, and at some events as well.
Counsel, any words?
What's your last name, Steven?
Wofford.
Wofford. By any chance, did you have Professor Cuff for math down at Wingate?
I did not. I know who that is.
You know who that is.
I talked to him, but I didn't have him, though.
Okay, good. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the Internet. Comments are limited, three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing your grievance here on public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us here on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask your respect of our town employees' rights to a fair hearing to your grievance. I will open the public comments. You have three minutes. When the buzzer goes off, Ms. Meg, you're up.
Meg Fielding, 1011 Council Fire Circle, Indian Trail. Last week, we got a notice saying that we were, our street was going to be resurfaced. And I know that most of the time, you guys all hear complaints, and I wanted to come tonight to tell you what a great job they did. They communicated exactly what they were going to do, the timeframe and the days that they were going to do it. My husband went out and talked to them to get specific information, which they freely gave. They started on time, they ended on time, and the street looks great. So I just wanted to thank you for resurfacing my street.
Okay, at this time, I'll close public comments and invite the council for any of their feedback. Anyone? Nope. Okay. Captain Cobble, you're up. Law enforcement update.
If my math is right, there's 22 minutes on the agenda that's sectioned out after me, so I'm gonna be really quick.[697.37][697.37](Laughter). You have the information in front of you, you can read it at your leisure. We had some, I had some update on the breaking and entering of motor vehicle and larcenies of motor vehicles that we had back in early September. There's been three individuals charged in that matter, one 17-year-old, one 15, one 14-year-old. We also had a sexual battery investigation that occurred at a business here in Indian Trail from back in May. Took a little while, but we were able to make a case on that, and Detective May made some criminal charges on it. Last Thursday, Eric D's performed a traffic stop along 74 about 6:11 in the evening for a Toyota 4Runner that was exceeding the speed limit and lane change violation. And so during that traffic stop, it was discovered the driver didn't have a license. One of our K-9 handlers came up on the traffic stop, got out, ran his dog around it, which alerted to presence of narcotics. So, and the end result of it was 140 grams of cocaine, 50 dosage units of oxycodone, Suboxone strips, U.S. currency, and a 32-year-old gentleman from Charlotte was arrested and charged with trafficking cocaine and trafficking opioids. And then we had a, an incident this past Sunday, Sun Valley area, another road rage incident on Wesley Chapel Road, right there at Wesley Chapel Stouts Road at the intersection of Old Monroe. Couple of weeks ago, you remember, we had an incident where somebody discharged a firearm down below the entrance to the Sheridan subdivision down there involved in a road rage. So, I'll say again, give a little room and give a little patience, but a couple of guys on motorcycles were out for a Sunday afternoon ride. They took advantage of an open lane where there's two lanes that cross over Old Monroe Road and got into the front of a line of cars. The guy that was in the front apparently thought he was supposed to get a trophy, and so he got upset that he got passed. And at some point, he decided it'd be a good idea to bump into one of the motorcyclists with the cars. One of the motorcyclists was armed, had a concealed carry permit, and appropriately used his firearm to de-escalate the situation. And so thus, he was not charged with any type of firearm violation. However, we did arrest the driver of the car. So my thought for the week is, you can't go around bumping into people on motorcycles. I would also extend that to pedestrians and bicycles, even if they make you mad. So just try to stay in your lane, and there's no trophy, you just gotta get home, so have a little patience out here. And then on the back, I've got a summary for just a few of the types of service calls and things that we deal with. Certainly, it's not an all-inclusive list, and then also with the number of calls for service, I broke them down by north and south, and just did a three-month kind of snapshot comparison for you just to glance over. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
In the last few months, I know that the Walmart shopping center is probably an area for high activity. Have you guys seen an uptick, or you think things are at a steady level in terms of the reports that come out of that store for various things?
So Walmart is really dependent upon their loss prevention.
Okay.
So let's say, for instance, if you're the loss prevention guy that works there, and David is also your coworker, partner with you, and he's out of work or takes vacation, you might not be as productive, so therefore, you might not call us as much, or if he's out sick or you're out sick. So, you know, we can't really track criminal activity at Walmart because we're not really tracking the criminal activity as much as we're tracking the good work of their loss prevention officers, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So, you know, so far this summer, it's kind of, it's kind of been steady. We had some days where we were repeatedly over there a lot, but we have some aggressive loss prevention folks over there, and we like to support them because we like for folks to get the idea, don't come to Indian Trail to steal, so. But as far as this summer, it was, I'd say it was kind of leveled out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Brings us to the consent agenda. There's no changes, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Brings us to old business, Chestnut Parkway, Phase Two and Three. Mr. Hussinger.
Mayor, Council, I'm here to give an update on both projects. Obviously, Phase Three is a town project, and 5008 is a NCDOT project. We just want to start off current status right now. The 5008 is basically in right-of-way acquisition right now. They are on a kind of a standby like everything else right now, meaning they're moving towards right-of-way acquisition, but as, at this time, we don't know if they're actually purchasing any right-of-way. So, we won't know that for sure till a few more months, but we'll keep you posted. Phase Three, again, we're moving forward, getting ready for right-of-way acquisition. We're getting close, 65% plans. I'll, as you can see, let me have that mouse. Go back, just go back one. All right. And you see, basically, straight through roadway. Right now, again, we've received 65% plans right now. We've received our revised drainage plans, so we've got to review those two, send them back. DOT has been sent the plans as well for review. We just got our preliminary erosion control plan for review this week, so we'll start looking at that. There is a box culvert, you'll see here in a minute, 14 by 8, that has to go through the planning, the design process, meaning first off, they have to do a CSR, which is a culvert survey report. Once that is approved, then they'll go into structural design. So right now, they're working on the CSR, that'll be done next week. And then we'll move forward to structural design. Still working on the permitting. We're trying to combine both projects as far as the permitting aspect with the core of engineering. We're, the permitting agencies, they're going to try to coordinate a meeting with us and NCDOT to see what we can figure out on that. So that's ongoing. And then we do have a sewer line relocation that we've worked with the county, and it came up with a more economical option to relocate that, which is right beside the culvert. So, next slide. Just to recap, you've been told this before, but I wanted to remind you. When we first started off with this project, we were told by DOT that, you know, we were going to have to tie into Old Monroe Road. And through negotiations between us and the DOT, we basically told them that, you know, we felt we shouldn't spend money to tie on the road that they were going to widen in the future, and so they agreed. And that basically right there, that area right there is not being built, and that saved the town and the taxpayers about a million dollars. Next slide. So that's what it looks like now, being that we don't have to build those improvements along Old Monroe Road. So we're stopping short, the four-lane boulevard. Next slide. Coming down to the culvert area, you'll see that box culvert right here. Again, it's a 14 by 8, that is in the FEMA flood plane, so we have to do permitting. They're going through a no-rides certification, that's ongoing right now. And then the sewer line is like right beside of it, and we have to relocate that, which is obviously an additional cost. And then we come down to Gribble. Gribble is right here. Obviously, they're building a roundabout, you'll see that in just a second, so we're stopping short of that, which saves the town a little bit of money. And we also are creating two left turns right here for future development considerations. Basically, that's it for that project. Any questions for Phase Three before I go on to 5008?
Patrick?
On Monroe Road, we probably hold off on the design. So we're monitoring Monroe Road and their Phase Two. So if they move forward with Phase Two, we will work, we'll continue designing the projects and coordinate to construct at the same time. But if we feel that they're not going to move forward with Phase Two, we will hold off. Because Phase Two by itself, I think that is 14 million dollars.
14 million dollars, yes.
14 million dollars. So if they don't have the funding for that, and we know it's going to be delayed, we will hold off on the design.
And just so you know, the current estimate for our portion of the parkway is at 4 million. I was going to say something else. When he was talking about holding off on the project, again, the town does have a monthly meeting with the DOT at the end of the month, so every month, I ask for updates. So as this project's going on, something changes, obviously, we'll come back and inform the council. Moving on to 5008, again, this is what it's going to look like in the end. Let's see, go to the next slide, sorry. Again, they are obviously going for a roundabout at Gribble. Go to the next slide, it's the cleaner version. As you can see here, this is basically a hybrid, it's a dual lane on one side, single lane on the other side. And I'm going to explain a little bit what DOT's analysis was on why they picked this version. First off, they went through four alternatives. Next slide. First alternative was basically a dual roundabout, which basically complied with capacity analysis and everything, but they wanted to see if a single lane would work. Obviously, it saves a little money here and there and everything else. So they looked at three alternative single lanes. The true, original single lane, which is basically you have the left, the right, and the straight-through on all four sides. Then you have the hybrid, which is northeast, southwest, dual lanes on either side. And then you had alternative four, which had dual lanes on basically the west side. And per conversations with them, basically, the reason why they chose this option is, one, the dual lane obviously is, has higher counts of side-swiping as far as crash, so safety reasons why. They kind of didn't want to go with that, even though it meets all the warrants as far as capacity. The other one was, based on traffic flow and pattern, this action, this option besides option, alternative three, which is, was the previous one, if you want to flashback to that real quick. This one, besides that one, traffic pattern-wise, the alternative four met better requirements. And then, of course, the volume-capacity ratio, just to simply state this, basically, when they do intersections, they do volume over capacity, and if it goes over a one, then obviously, volume's more than capacity. It's over one, the intersection doesn't work. This alternative, and alternative one, which is dual lane, stayed under one. This actually stayed under, they tried to stay under actually .85. This actually stayed right under .85. The dual lane stayed .5. So again, they went with this option better. So that's why we're getting, the roundabout, we're getting. All right. Next sheet, basically, this is the overpass over the railroad. Again, this is what it's going to look like at the very end, just wanted to give you a visual. Next slide. All right, this is Matthews Indian Trail intersection. So you see, there's a lot of stuff going on. They are tying down, if you notice. They will be tying down all the way to the town hall entrance, realigning curb and everything. And all right, go to the next slide, and here's the cleaner version. Here's Matthews Indian Trail Road, town hall's down here, you're getting a straight, a right, a left. Well, I wanted to show this to you is, if you have noticed on Chestnut Parkway coming from the bridge, they've got a left turn, a straight-through, and a right turn. So basically, what they're saying is, traffic volume-wise, they don't need dual straight-throughs to get through the parkway based on future traffic counts, meaning the town would be able to keep their, their on-street parking along the parkway for a longer period of time. And now, when I say "future," I'm talking about 20/40 counts, which right now, 20/40 counts for the portion of Matthews to Indian Trail Road is 16, is based on, is going to be 16,000. And their threshold for widening to two-lane to four-lane is pretty much around 18,000. So again, that portion of the parkway, now, the other portions are going to be over 20,000 cars. So there, it's a warrant for the four-lane. But for our section, it appears, future growth-wise, we're going to be okay, and we're going to be able to keep some of that parking for the future. But just wanted to make you aware that it is not going to be a dual straight-through through that intersection. I think that's it. And last slide, apologize. Wanted to just show you, that's the intersection out there, Independence. You see is Chestnut Parkway to Smith Farm Road. Again, this is a reverse, a reverse super-street design, or RCI, you don't want to call you super-street anymore. Again, that's supposed to be a part of the 5008 project. As of right now, that's the case. I haven't heard anything different. I'm sure it'll be coordinated with, obviously, the new development, they got a past, previous council meeting, so there'll be some coordination there with that signalized intersection at parkway and 74, but just wanted to make you aware of that as well. Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the Chestnut Parkway artificial turf construction. Mr. Sadek?
Abby, would you like to go ahead and cover the coordination with Panthers, either you or Hayden, and I'll cover the change order part?
Hi, good evening, Council. We've been working closely with the Panthers organization to coordinate the event for October 21st, which we're really excited about. The field is on track. So at that event, we're planning on having a ribbon-cutting ceremony, play 60 area where the kids can actually play on some of the, you know, football equipment. We'll have some players there, cheerleaders there, some refreshments. So it should be a really nice way to celebrate the great opening of the field in partnership with the Panthers that we hope, you know, will be able to extend beyond the field in future years. Any questions?
Yeah. Were you successful in getting some of the other local organizations, be it football, soccer, or otherwise, to participate?
Yes, there are some. I know that Seth has made contact with already, and that they're...
They're committed to come in?
They're committed, and then I know he's reaching out to some others as well, so we can get as many folks there as possible to celebrate with us and get out on the field and play on it for the first time.
Okay.
Any other questions for Abby? Mr. Sadek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I reported to council last time, we did go into some bad soil out there, and talking to locals and staff that have been with the city for a while, we determined that that area, which is the southwest quadrant, used to be sort of like a small creek swale for many, many years. And then on top of that, when they leveled up the field, they also brought some soil from Chestnut Parkway. We were able to remove all of it. It was tested, it passed, and we reduced the change order from $185,000 to $87,000. So, and the way we did that is, we saved money on purchasing the gravel, also transporting the bad soil all the way to, well, I don't want to call it bad soil, it's a soil that can be used for landscaping, but it's not structural soil. And we did ship all that to Heritage. I think they took every truck. So this is where the saving came in. Right now, it passed, and also, we will get the warranty on the product, and the project's still on schedule. And I think at the end of the week, Dalton, if I'm not mistaken, they will be, they will start putting the carpet on top of the field. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to committee meeting liaison update. Anybody have an update? Yeah? Mr.?
I have one for carpet.
Okay, go ahead.
I need just a second. I didn't know if Chairman, if Marcus had something from the planning board while I get this out, or any other meetings. Well, we'll do it from memory. So, the last CARPO meeting, we got the bad news that there is a delay on funding and the Garvey bonds, as well as all the other monies. We have three projects, I believe, that are being submitted in P6.0. One of them is Monroe Road to, from Wesley Chapel Stouts to Airport. The other one is in the carryover bucket or basket. That's Wesley Chapel Stouts from 74 to Monroe Road. And there's a third one, and it escapes me without my notes. But at, at the CARPO website, you can go there now. And now is the important time. They just opened up public comments, and it's only open for a month. It goes from September, I believe, 19th through October 18th, if, again, if my memory is correct. And also, there will be a CARPO meeting that you could come and, and speak at. And if there's any projects that we want to see happen here in Indian Trail, this is a, a key, critical time to, to provide that input to the public officials. Not saying that more squeaky wheels would get some grease, but it wouldn't hurt. We will find out here, again, still January regarding the Monroe Road. And then February, March timeframe, we'll learn a little bit more about other projects. They're going to have a, an educational workshop for potentially new council persons that may be going on to CARPO. That'll happen in January. But there's some educational material out here for, for anyone who wants to learn more about CARPO, right on the website. Really, we're just, everybody's holding, holding pat until we find out what funding's available and what projects will get funded. It's the third Wednesday of every month at East 600 Fourth Street, the Government Center in Charlotte. It begins at 6:00. I would recommend, you know, getting there 10 minutes early to sign up for public comments. And, and of course, if, if anybody needs directions or assistance to get there, feel free to give me a holler.
Mr. Sadek?
Go ahead, Dave.
No, go ahead.
Just to add to what Mr. Morse was saying, we, we do have a meeting with the county, with Union County CRTPO on the 9th of October. And what we're planning is to coordinate with them, Union County projects. So, that way, if we submit to CRTPO, at least we'll have intersections and roadways coordinated before we make the supplemental. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cohn?
I would give an ABC quick update. And I really kind of feel like if it's okay, and I don't know if Jim would like to get up, if it's okay for Jim White to come up and speak about it. He is on our ABC board, and he's our, our resident liquor taster. And he reports on some liquor tasting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim White, 1815 Green Tree Lane. I am on the ABC board. In our last meeting, we discussed a Senate-passed bill that was signed into law by Governor Roy Cooper. And it mainly dealt with whiskey distributors. Most of the bill dealt with their unusual process, how much they could sell, all these kind of things. But there was one piece in that bill that dealt with the spirit store. And that authorization authorized a spirit store to have in-store tasting. And subsequently, the board voted unanimously at our last meeting to conduct that testing, tasting in Indian Trail. The law went into effect September 1. I'm proud to announce that on September the 6th, we had our first tasting. We hosted it. Our good friends here in Indian Trail, Goat Whiskey was a sponsor. We reached out to them and asked them, since they are the only Indian Trail distributor that we have currently, and because they have done tasting at their own facility, they knew what to expect and how to transfer that over to the spirit store. We ran this tasting between 4:00 PM to 7:00. That's all that's allowed by law. And we had 68 participants to participate in our first tasting. We believe, we don't have proof, but we believe we're the first ABC spirit store in Union County to conduct a product tasting event. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. And I'm, you were there, right? I mean, you, I wasn't there. I, I know you were there. And as a matter of fact, Jim got caught with different costumes. He kept going outside and changing clothes because they, they limit you to how much you can have. And he kept saying, oh. But they didn't recognize him, like the fourth time he came through. But I'm just kidding, Jim. Thank you for your hard work to get you off.
Quick question. Is that three hours limit per day, or is it those particular hours, the four to seven time period?
I'm sorry. We can hold legally, we can hold events three times a week, but we must condense it to three hours per tasting event. So, you could have three, six, nine hours of tasting throughout the spirit store. The thing, okay, first of all, this is brand-new rule. We're having difficulty finding distributors who want to come to an event because they haven't planned on how they're going to handle the event. So, we, we were lucky that we were able to get Goat Whiskey. And I don't think we have, unless we announce tomorrow night at our meeting, any more events scheduled or coming up. I know our general manager, Jeff Sullivan, he is enthused about this, and he wants to have one, one, three times a week. But we can't have a distributor yet. And in regards to volume, let me just say this, it's a quarter of an ounce per person. It's all you can have. And trust me, to an old drinker like me, a quarter of an ounce ain't good.
One other quick question.
Yes, sir.
Did they, did they sell any, did they manage to be successful by doing that, or do you?
Yes, I talked to Jeff. Unfortunately, we didn't keep statistics for that night. He has weekly statistics on any product that he sells out of the store. And there was an uptick to Goat Whiskey, but we can't narrow it down to that particular night. But we believe that they did move product. And that's, you know...
That's what it's all about, really.
Well, that's what it's all about. Plus, I believe, an informed citizen is a good consumer. And this way, we get products out there. You know me, I'm the same way every time. I dash in, I grab my bottle, and I don't dash out. I go by and pay for it. But I don't look at anything else. And, you know, I really should be one that would stop and look and, you know, understand the different types of spirits that we do offer. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to new business. That would be the Transit Oriented Development Study.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the privilege of serving as a representative for the town for the Transit Oriented Development Study, better known as the Silver Line or Light Rail. I wanted to briefly provide council with an update on the study and the progress. The town of Indian Trail has executed a memorandum of understanding with the City of Charlotte for the Federal Transit Administration's Transit Oriented Development Pilot Program Grant. The request for proposals was released on August the 2nd of this year. And on September the 12th, the evaluation team met and reviewed the proposals from seven firms. Out of the seven firms, three firms were shortlisted and invited to an interview by the evaluation team scheduled for September 30th. The evaluation team is comprised of a variety of City of Charlotte representatives such as CATS, Aviation Planning, Economic Development, Charlotte Department of Transportation, Charlotte Planning, and Charlotte Housing. But the team's also has representatives from Indian Trail, of course, Stallins, Matthews, Belmont, and Gastonia. The three firms shortlisted were Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Kettleson, and AECOM. And it's staff's intent to continue to update council as we move forward with this study. Thank you for the time.
Any questions? Thank you. That brings us to a revenue update. Mr. Wadoitz?
Good evening. Good to be in front of you again tonight. We thought it would be a good opportunity to give you an update on our revenue trending for about a five-year period. The town manager thinks globally, there's a lot going on. The Federal Reserve just cut the interest rate on the gasoline issue, which affects discretionary income, which affects sales tax. So, what we do, we're going to take you through four of our major revenue categories. I'll be brief. The first one is our taxes, our ad valorem, for a five-year period. So, you'll see, we have, the blue is the actual budget. The, the, let's call that brown. The brown is the actual revenue. So, basically, what we do, our budget is based on 96%. So, we're very conservative. So, basically, what we do, we build fund balance that way. So, you see each year, the gold, for example, in fiscal year 19, we're 278,000 ahead. Moody's, first thing they said when they reviewed us, why doesn't every town do that? So, we budget at 96%. We're positive. So, ad valorem taxes, what that consists of, real briefly, mainly the home for the residents, for business, it's their structure. We're at 18.5 cents per hundred, you know that. And it's also personal property. We have about $180 million worth of business personal property that is taxable. It's an honor system. The businesses have to report it. And Union County will audit and penalize accordingly. The residential personal property, much smaller, it's about 8 million, trailers with tires, boats. The average assessed value in our town for 200,000, is about $200,000. That would be taxed at about $370. Add another 100 for one of our three fire districts. Next, this is the total assessed valuation. Now, this is a good slide. Basically, you see we have an upward trending. It's positive. It slowed down a little bit in fiscal year 20. We're going to keep an eye on that. Every other year, 3%, 3.4, went up about 1.7. A little bit about assessed valuations. The value that a home is assessed at remains constant until the county revaluation gets done. Last one was done in 2015. So, just a quick example, if your home is worth 200,000 in 2019, the house around you is selling for 250, nothing changes until they get to the next revale, which is 2021. I called Union County, they're estimating we're at about 20% increase when that 2021 revale comes around, meaning that they're going to catch up those prices on the homes. Right now, we're about 73% residential, 27% business, commercial. Next slide, please. Sales tax is a very interesting one. It's our second biggest revenue generator. Sales tax is distributed by Union County. We get a check every month. We're, it's based on the ad valorem method, which is based on the size of the tax levy. So, the larger your tax levy, the more sales tax you get. Real quickly, Monroe, for example, has a 63 cent tax per 100. They get three times the sales tax we get every month. I'm not crazy about that methodology. Up in New York, it was based on population, and I won't go into that too much. But, so, sales tax is good, because as you can see the chart, we've gone up every year. 16, 15 to 16 was flat every year. We got our first installment in, 212,000. Our budget's 2/4, so that means we'll, you know, annualize out to about 2/6. So, again, we're healthy there. Next chart, please. Patrick, please chime in. You help me with these.
You're doing a good job.
Okay.
If, if I may, Jim?
Yes.
Can you elaborate a little bit about the difference between the two methodologies, if you don't mind?
Yeah. There's 100 counties in North Carolina. 52 counties are on what they call the population method, which is the method I would love. It's called the per capita method. The other 40, and that includes some of the big boys, Duke, Durham, Wake County. The other 40 are under the ad valorem. Now, the per capita method is based on population. So, for example, we have 38,000 people last, and Waxaw has 16,000. Waxaw received more than we did. Councilman Head, you were with me at the, at the Union County Planning Commission. Waxaw doesn't want commercial. They're at 7%, and they want $600,000 homes. Yet, they get more sales tax than we do. I don't like that. But, so, there is another method out there that, again, the Union County commissioners decide on. Won't spend too much time on that. Next is motor vehicle tax. Again, based on your vehicle being registered every year, January 1, Union County, we get a monthly check on this. The interesting one here is, this is based on the 18.5 cents. So, Jerry, if you own a 2018 Ford in, in Indian Trail, you pay about $250 a year. That same vehicle in the city of Monroe is $900. So, I just thought that was interesting. Sometimes we do this research. So, it is based on the tax rate. So, people come to Indian Trail, your, your car will be taxless. It's a message for you. Waxaw, they have a 500, that would, that same car will be $520. Again, because their tax rate's 34 cents, same car is taxed at a higher rate. That makes sense? And the last one we're proud of is the interest income. You can see back in '16, the numbers were, the budget was 17,000, and they exceeded that 46,000. We take this seriously. The previous administration had a lot of money in CDs at lower rates, very conservative, I'm not knocking it. But we have our money now. The budget in '16 was 17. Last month, we took in $46,000 in interest income. So, we work at it. Pat looks at it every month, wants to know where the money's invested. And we keep an eye on this because we know the interest rates are dropping based on the Federal Reserve. So, again, the brown is what we exceeded budget by. You see in '19, the audit will be done next week. We're expecting another good year. Fiscal year 19, I'm projecting a surplus of 255,000 over budget. I don't know how that happens, but, so, anyway, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We're watching it. These are our biggest revenue. Patrick, you want to add anything?
The only item that I'd like to add is, as we continue to complete the projects, we're going to be digging into the savings. So, the interest income is going to be lower than the past two, three years. And that's why, because we're building projects. So, just want to let you guys know that.
Mr. Cohn?
I have two, two questions, or at least two questions. How do we go about, it makes no sense to me, what you just said about the sales tax. How, how does Waxaw get more money than Indian Trail when they, you know, when you first explained it, I tried to go through my mind and say, well, maybe Monroe has a lot more businesses than Indian Trail, and that might make more sense. They, they seem to be, have a bigger downtown area, have that. But then, when you go into the fact that Waxaw doesn't even want it, 7% businesses, and who, how do they, how do they come up with that formula? And what can we do about it to change it? You know, that, that, that's what we need to do, is, is, who, I guess we go to the county commissioners and say, hey, man, this, this is, this is crazy. I mean, this makes no sense at all.
That's, that's a discussion item on the next meeting that we... That's a discussion item on the next meeting that we have with them, David. So definitely, we need to get rid of that.
Okay. And then the second thing I'd like to say is, you know, you talk about the previous regime having everything into CDs, and, you know, just kind of sitting up here watching how things go and how the town's running, and if I want to make my judgment or my opinion of it, you know, it's running pretty darn well, and you guys are doing a darn good job. $46,000 in last, was it last year?
Last month.
Last month, excuse me, last month, and just interest. You're doing a heck of a job. You're doing a heck of a job, and y'all are doing a heck of a job. You know, roads are, you know, Meg comes up and says, hey, you're doing a good job on the roads. And I'm speaking to everybody, and there's a few people up there also listening out on, online. You know, we hear so much about what's wrong with this town, with these little websites out there, you know, negative, 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 negative. And if you get right down to it, we're doing a good job. And I'm not saying we are doing a good job, but we got to let you do your job, but you guys are doing a great job. And if you out there, and you in here, would let, pass that around, try to get over the constant, you know, gloom and doom, and, you know, nastiness of what people are out there saying about different people and different things. And hey, let's smile and keep on walking, because I'm proud of you. I just love what I'm hearing, and I love walking away knowing that we're on top and really running on all cylinders. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you, Dave.
Ms. Howe.
Jim, do we still have the same audit company? Is this the new one?
Yes, JB Watson, year four.
So how long do we go with the same company?
I'm not sure. Next year would be the end.
Five years, and then we change, right?
No, okay.
Yeah.
That's important.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
And thank you for your support. Again, we, you know, I appreciate that, Dave, but you guys support us, and I know, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Brings us to Economic Development Update. Mr. Evans.
With the positive feedback from the community, the carnival at Sun Valley will return this fall. And also, there's going to be an ice skating rink that's erected at Sun Valley for the holiday season. I've worked very closely with Extreme Ice and the Moser Group for these events, as they will have a positive economic impact on our businesses and restaurants in Indian Trail. Some prospects I've been working with, we've made several contacts with IT and software development companies, mostly in Chicago and California, to entice them to either expand or relocate in Indian Trail. One obvious reason for them to consider relocating is, the Indian Trail has, they would have a huge tax saving. We've contacted several textile companies on the East Coast for expansion or relocation. I've received recently an answer back from a textile company in Pennsylvania with a positive response, and it's close to Pittsburgh. We're currently in the very preliminary talks in searching for the right location and to see what incentives we can, that they might qualify for. We're currently working with a local broker for a major Bedford distributor that requires a 200,000 square foot facility. I've connected the local developer with a, a local developer with the broker, and they're currently in talks. Brandon and I have met with a developer for a potential upscale hotel conference facility that is interested in building out by the Monroe Expressway. The individual that we met with was very surprised and impressed with the vision of Indian Trail and the progress that we've made with all the projects that are ongoing. We met with another gentleman from Charlotte that has, from the Charlotte area, that's interested in developing a hotel on the Route 74 corridor, and this project may include retail as well. The residential phase of the town, Indian Trail Town Center has broken ground, and I continue to meet with the developer, bringing in potential tenants for a commercial retail phase. We are meeting with a brewery next week as part of the entertainment aspect of the town center. The Italian restaurant with retail shops on the first floor and residential on the top is moving forward since the rezoning was approved at the last council meeting. The location of this project is on Indian Trail Road, running from South Fork to Park I'm working very closely with Brandy and the planning staff on a daily basis to ensure that what businesses and commercial we're bringing into Indian Trail is consistent with the UDO and land use plan. The downtown master plan was adopted back in July of 2006, and is finally starting to be implemented with the beginning of Indian Trail Town Center, the Italian Restaurant Project, and our complete street will begin very soon. All these projects will create a true live, work, and play environment with connectivity and walkability. The diversity of commercial, retail, and industry that we're introducing will bring a more balanced base tax, enabling us to keep our tax rate low with our sustainable future for Indian Trail. Any questions?
Patrick?
Just one comment in regard to the Italian restaurant development that was recommended by the planning committee, was not approved by council, just a small correction. And in regard to any textile companies that we invite to Indian Trail, we're not looking at silos and fume and all that, we're looking at fabrication more than manufacturing and chemicals and all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. It looks like you guys are working well together.
Yes.
And hey, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Union County Commission, Town Council, upcoming meeting.
Just one more time, I did share with council some dates, also a list of topics. Just a reminder, October the 9th, there'll be a meeting with Mr. Watson and his staff here in Indian Trail, and also, I will include all our staff in the meeting. And the intended meeting is to prepare the presentation, discuss the topics, and go to the commission and council on November the 7th prepared. So we'll have questions to all the answer, and I will welcome any suggestion from our council in regard to the meeting on the 7th of November. But what we did is, we had about eight, nine items, and Mr. Watson and myself thought that two hours will not be enough to discuss all of them, so we kind of split them in half. So the first meeting is to discuss what I shared with you guys today, and the following meeting, we will capture the rest of them. Any questions, Mr. Mayor or council?
You're good, Patrick.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, that brings us to, any more updates by the manager?
Not to beat up on North Carolina DOT, we heard another sort of like bad news we shared with council, that we were going to step in and take care of several streets at, in Taylor Glen, but Todd received an update from North Carolina DOT saying that they're backing out of that one. So that $350,000 that we were going to get to bring the streets up to standard, that's out of the question right now, so we will not be doing any work at Taylor Glen. And probably what we'll do is, we'll communicate with HOA and make them aware that that deal is out.
Is that all, Patrick?
That's it, sir, unless council have any questions.
I have a question, actually. In regards to the communication with Taylor Glen on the street situation there, are there any other alternatives that we can look at? Can we be creative? The reason I say that is, these residents, you know, they live in our town, they pay taxes, they live here. It would be good if we could probably explore some other avenues to do that. I know DOT, I guess DOT is due to the budget not being passed, is that the delay right now? And I don't foresee that, you know, that impasse being, you know, broken anytime soon, but is there any, are there any other alternatives that we can, excuse me, look at to provide these residents? The reason I say that is, you know, Ms. Fielding spoke this evening, and she was very excited about a street being done, which is great. But then sometimes, most people may not necessarily know the funding mechanisms behind the construction or the repair of the roadway. So if, while I agree in terms of contacting the HOA, that's a very proactive manner, do we have any options or other avenues that we can look at to do that? Would DOT be, would DOT be willing for us to go ahead and sort of get this done right now, because it's going to cost 350, and when the budget's passed, they reimburse us? Would they be willing to something of that nature?
That was the original deal, is to go ahead and put up the money upfront and then collect from them in about a year. But right now, they're saying the money will not be there.
Okay.
So to be creative, anyway, we have to be a bit consistent, because we continuously get asked by neighborhood that have state streets or private streets. We have to be very careful and very consistent. If some of these neighborhoods step to the bar and put some money upfront to bring their streets to standards, sort of, this is the only methodology the town has right now, then we'll be willing to work with them. But those streets that we resurface, and what we have this year on the resurfacing contract, that funding is coming out of the Powell bill. So the Powell bills take care of resurfacing town streets. But the dilemma is that some of these streets in the neighborhood, they're private and state. We will not, we will continue to communicate with the state to make sure if there is any funding mechanism out there. But while we're communicating right now with couple neighborhoods in town, and they're willing to pay to bring those streets to standards out of their HOA money, we have to be very careful not to go out there and come up with something different that would make it a challenge for us to be consistent.
All right. Ms. Cohen.
Maybe I understood you wrong, but was the town going to put up $350,000? Is that what, and then DOT was going to put up money also?
No. In order for us to take over State Street, we do the same thing with them, too. We won't take it unless they bring it to standards.
Take care of those private roads, then you're talking about, or they?
No, these streets at Taylor Glen, they're owned by the state. So we treat the state like-
Like a private road?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's why the state was going to step in and put in their, I guess, not knowing it was a state road?
Yes, sir.
Now, were all the roads in Taylor Glen state roads, or were some of them private roads?
They own Phase 2, they own Phase 1.
Who owns Phase 1?
The state.
The state, who owns Phase 2, the town?
The state, yes.
Okay, were they brought in as private roads, or were they brought in as town roads?
They were brought in as town roads, Phase 2 was.
Okay.
That's when we first started taking streets.
Gotcha, gotcha. So what you're saying is, state streets and private roads are the same?
They're the same. And the resurfacing money that we have from the state for the Powell bill, we only use them to maintain streets that are owned by the town.
One last question. If the state wants to turn those, and I know state does turn roads over to the town, or they want to turn roads over to the town, do they, do they often, I'm trying to phrase this question, do they often just turn them over without fixing them first? Or no? They always fix them before they, okay.
Got it. And just to give you an example, Mr. Cohen, the street uptown, which is, they were offering us $500,000 to take over the street, but because we feel that the street costs about $1 million, we said we're not going to accept it. I mean, we're not going to take money out of our pocket to maintain state streets that they're not keeping maintained. I think we do a better job maintaining our roadway than the state maintains theirs. And of course, they have budget issues, and we understand that.
Any other questions? Nope. That brings us to council comments.
Mayor Alvarez.
Well, thanks for a quick and easy meeting. Not much to say, only thing I ask, Jim, is there a way you can guesstimate, when you do your presentation on the sales tax, that you guesstimate what the difference would have been if we were per capita versus Ad Valorem in the county? Or is that just too much work?
I was here.
Oh, you have it?
I was sure we were double for a month.
Okay. Well, we'll have the presentation next week. That was my only question. Other than that, everybody have a great night, God bless.
Ms. Howe.
It's still, is it dark out there? I'm sitting here in awe, because-
It's dusk.
It's dusk, okay. Meeting went fast then, didn't it, tonight? Everybody was behaving themselves. Hope everybody has a safe drive home, and thank you for coming this evening.
Mr. Cohen.
Thanks for coming. Again, thank you, staff. Thanks for, Jim, for your, doing a great job, you and Patrick, and I love how y'all work together. Gary's working, you know, you have the economic development, working with the planning department, and everything is, you guys are working well together, and things are going along. Abby, I just wanted to tell you, I was at the Carolina game Saturday, and I was very disappointed, not in the fact that I pulled for, not, I was pulling for Appalachian State, believe it or not, they won, but when there were, it was sold out, and beautiful day, and they announced the starting lineups, and when they announced Carolina's starting lineup, they announced Sam Howell at quarterback for Monroe, North Carolina. So I know I take that too personally, but I'm going to give up, because obviously, I think he's, or somebody should, should say something, and maybe they don't want to. I'm proud of the fact that he's from Indian Trail, and I wish that when that would have came up, it would have been a big picture of him and a big thing that said Indian Trail, North Carolina, instead of Monroe, because it ain't Monroe, it's Indian Trail. Keep on pushing, and maybe they'll, they'll change. But thanks for coming.
I have to get you a bunny for your old jab.
Yeah.
Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. Cohen, don't give up. Don't, no. If he's from Indian Trail, he is from Indian Trail. If you, if you want, I can join you in that effort. Maybe you write two letters to them.
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah. Let's let them know that he's from Indian Trail, and we're proud that he's from Indian Trail. Thank you, everybody, tonight for coming. Ms. Fielding, thanks for your service, and also, thanks for good news. The good, I want to say, sort of, the good thing is that all residents don't always come to the meetings unless there's a problem. So must mean that staff and council is doing a good job. But it's good to hear that, I know that there was a situation where the streets weren't, the street repaving was not communicated. But it's good to see that staff has made improvements, so I'm happy to see that. Thank you for that. Staff, as always, I appreciate all that you guys do. Council, again, a pleasure serving if you. Mr. Mayor, you posted some good news in that you only have to go back, what, every two years now?
No, twice a year.
Twice a year? So it's good to see that you're on the mend, and you can continue serving the good people of the town.
Oh, thank you.
Squid, thank you very much for your time and your service as well. Everybody have a good evening, and drive them safe.
Mr. Head.
If I did it correctly, the increase in the, just the interest was over 700% increase in that time period that you showed. That's phenomenal. That's phenomenal. That's just bound money, you know? Appreciate it. Chase, thanks for, you and all your team does, and everybody drive them safe.
And Ms. Morris.
Well, thank you, staff, and everyone that came out tonight to attend the meeting, and those that spoke up. I would like to return back to Mr. Soul with common heart, and just take an opportunity to expand on something here. I've got two favorite charities here locally in Union County. I've got two favorite charities here locally in Union County, Common Heart and Hometown Heroes. And then St. Jude's is my kind of charity outside of local. But Common Heart, I have been affiliated with them now for just a few years, and it's been very satisfying donating money or time to that organization. One of the things that they have coming up really soon, and it's on October eleventh, is their Annual Love and Action Fundraising banquet. The tickets are very inexpensive, this is a great way to go and see a talent show and have a dinner. It's like a movie dinner theater. They'll have a silent auction and other things going on to try to raise funds. They are one of our bright lights here in Indian Trail, and I hope this council will give it serious consideration to possibly giving this nonprofit a donation at the next council meeting. That's a little bit about that. And I'd like to dovetail Mr. Cohen's comments about having residents come here and actually sharing some positive news, because I know the first year and a half, we were inundated with complaints about the dust being kicked up out there, or there's a blasting going on, and, you know, roads, no notification on pavings, and these are a lot of positive things that have occurred now over the last little bit of what I feel like is a council in a town working on behalf of the residents. So kudos to everyone involved that make that happen. And Carolina got their first win, we're happy about that, and I hope you all have a great night, weekend, and see you next time.
All right. Guess what, council?
No.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Morris made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.